Good evening. I'd like to call to order our regular scheduled council meeting for Monday, March 7th, at 7:00 PM. Our first order of business is our opening ceremony, which consists of the National Anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those service members that have given their lives while defending our country. Would everybody please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Ms. Bettis, you take the roll, please.
Good evening, Your Honor. Mayor Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Squires.
Here.
Councilmember Kerwin.
Here.
Councilmember Lynch.
Here.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Here.
Councilmember McCarge.
Here.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Here.
Okay, next we have Item 4, Approval of the Agenda as Presented.
Mayor.
Councilmember Lynch.
I move for the revised addition of the agenda for Monday, March 7th, 2016, as presented. Support.
Support from Councilmember Squires. Any discussion from the table? From the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch.
Aye.
Councilmember Squires.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin.
Aye.
Mayor Walker.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Next, we have Community Events. I'm gonna call up Tracy Spiehar.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Garden City residents. My name is Tracy Spiehar, and I am the fundraising rep for the Garden City High School baseball team. Our newly hired varsity baseball coach, Coach Matt Penn, and I would like to invite everyone to our fundraisers that will be held on March 26th and April 23rd. Those watching from home, go grab a pen and a paper to write this down and save the date. The funds from the fundraiser will be going towards the renovation of the boys' varsity baseball field. The field is in dire need of an update. I have noticed that compared to other schools' baseball fields, when playing on Garden City High School field, the ball seems to come a little quicker, and I can tell you that I've placed Neosporin on some many, many good strawberries. Not an easy field to slide on. I would like to mention that not only does the high school use this field, but GCYAA for their Colt and Palomino leagues. So be prepared, GCYAA, we are coming to ask for some help. The financial goal is greater than $40,000. The funds will be going towards projects such as bringing the fences in 20 feet, placing more drains in our outfield, and hooking them to storm drains, turf the infield with Georgia clay base lines, scoreboard, outdoor netted bullpen and batting cage, home and away bleachers, nets over backstop to prevent foul balls from hitting moving and parked vehicles, blacktop the parking lot, lights for possible night games and tournament play for fundraisers. We are also pleading that if there is anyone that knows how to write a sports grant, could you please contact our varsity coach at gchscougarbaseball@gmail.com, or call our athletic director, Robert Phillips, at the high school. We would be forever grateful. Garden City is a baseball community, and our baseball and softball teams are respected by other communities. We currently, we are currently looking for experienced, reasonable civil engineer, excavators, and fence erectors to bid on some of these projects. Please email the Garden City High School Cougar Baseball with referral, referral information. Now for the updates. March 26th, the sports venue. A portion of the food and proceeds will go towards the baseball team with the expectation, I'm sorry, with the exception of pizza, so make the, so make it a date night, or just family night, and come and have some dinner for a great cause. On April 23rd, we are hosting a cornhole tournament at Albert's on the Alley. Tickets are only $25 per player, and the start time is at 4:00 PM. There will be cash prizes for first and second place, food raffles 50/50, any combinations of teams can play. You can bring your own team in. It can consist of couples, a guy team, a girl team, a daddy-daughter team, a mother-son team, and don't fear if you're a single player, we will match you, we will match you up with a partner. It's a fun game for a great cause. While waiting your turn to play, there will be pool tables for unlimited play and cards. We are selling tickets, so lock your spot. I have tickets with me this evening if anybody would like to purchase. I'm currently looking for vendors to set up a table of merchandise for our players to purchase. Please have any vendor that is willing to do this as possible fundraiser to, please email the gchscougarbaseball email. So I'm calling out for vendors of Avon, Mary Kay, Pampers Chef, Leah Sophia Jewelry 31. As a final note, if you're interested in advertising your company's names on the baseball fence, please email the GC Cougar Baseball. And as always, donations are greatly appreciated, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to communicate to this wonderful community that we live in. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have no comments from state and county officials? Mr. Jones? Yes.
I'm Mike Jones with the Garden City Kiwanis, and I'd like to inform the council and the audience about three events coming up. The first one is tomorrow night. It's from our high school group, the Key Club. They're presenting their Empty Bowl Banquet. It'll be tomorrow night, as I said, from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock in the Garden City High School cafeteria. Tickets are $10 for adults, $5 for students, $3 for children 6 to 12. Children 5 and under are free. Price includes several choices of unlimited soup, so even though it's an empty bowl banquet, nobody goes away hungry, I assure you. There's bread and butter, salad, desserts, and soft drinks. Everybody will get a handcrafted ceramic bowl made by high school students, and opportunities for 50/50 raffles and basket raffles. All the proceeds go to Kids Against Hunger, a food packaging, packaging charity. And then, on March 19th, Saturday, at 11:00, the Kiwanis, the Garden City Public Library, and the Maplewood Center are presenting Easter Extravaganza and Lunch with the Easter Bunny for ages 3 to 12. Tickets are $4. Got number 11 for my granddaughter today. As I said, it's Saturday, March 19th. It starts at 11:00. It's at the Maplewood Community Center, 31735 Maplewood. Join us for lunch, which will include hot dogs, chip, juice, and water, craft projects such as cookie decorating, bunny headbands, and more. Bring your camera and get a picture with the Easter bunny, Easter basket raffle before the egg hunt. The egg hunt will be the last activity, and will be around 1:00 PM. Tickets are on sale at the Garden City Public Library. There's a limited number of tickets, so don't wait to get yours. For more information, contact Eric Aaron at 734-793-1830. And finally, the Garden City Kiwanis Club is presenting a Comedy Night at Albert's on the Alley. This will be Sunday, April 17th, at 5:00 PM. It's located at 5651 Middle Belt Road in Garden City. It'll feature Mike Green and his clean comedy, so it's, for a change, probably more appropriate to a general audience than we've had in the past, but it's still gonna be at Albert's on the Alley, so no one under 18 is, can participate. And of course, in addition to Mike Green, who's our featured comedian, we'll have our own Kevin Kramas. Tickets are $20 per person. They can be purchased in advance from any Kiwanian at Albert's on the Alley, or at the door on the night of the show. Any questions, contact John Fleming at 734-604-0227, or john@flemmingfinancialservices.com. The doors open at 4:00 PM. And as I said, tickets are limited to the age 21 and above. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we have no state or county officials here tonight. No petitions or communications, no public hearings. Move on to Item 9, Consent Agenda.
Mayor.
Councilmember Lynch.
I move to approve the consent agenda, Item 9A1, which is the minutes of February 22nd.
Support.
Support from Councilmember King. Any discussion from the table? From the general public? Mr. Weisack.
At the last meeting, I went into the minutes that I felt were improper, and in this minutes of the 22nd, it says that I made public comment in rules of conduct, which is absolutely not true and inaccurate. I spoke about the compensation being paid to top salaried people in this city. So that is absolutely inaccurate. Now, I see a pattern developing here, because as I look at the other comments made by other people, seem to be right on the spot. What they said, and what I heard they say, is accurate on this council minutes. Secondly, this is the second time in a row. On that meeting previous, it indicated, and of course, Mr. Murray pooh-poohed the idea of putting too much in minutes. Minutes are important. Tells the people what was discussed that meeting. Now, it indicated council discuss the goals. That's what the meeting was called for. And it said, "We made comment, Mr. Buckner and I." Well, we did make comments, and you discussed items there that were noteworthy to be in the minutes. First of all, you discussed spending money to the nature of about $500,000 on a garage at the DPS, the repairs. Second, you discussed the idea of how many people, if any people, you would rehire, excuse me, not rehire, but hire. And thirdly, you discussed the reserve fund. What percentage in how many millions of dollars you're going to keep in reserve. That's true, that was discussed, and you did the general public whom you serve, or should be serving, you served them in injustice. The reserve has never been that high in years.
Thank you. Ms. Bettis, take the.
Councilmember Lynch.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge.
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin.
Aye.
Councilmember Squires.
Aye.
Mayor Walker.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Move on to Item B, our study session, B1. What's council's wish?
C.
C?
Mm-hmm.
Item 2, Purchase of Patrol Vehicles.
C.
C.
Hold on a second. May I interrupt?
Yeah.
Um, just for, um, item 1. Okay, never mind. I'm sorry, I misunderstood something. I apologize.
Okay.
Item 2?
C.
C.
C? Item 3, Supplemental Appropriations for the DDA and the library.
C.
C.
C? And Item 4, Vacated Property Registration Ordinance.
C.
C.
Okay. We will move now to the C agenda. C1, Five-Year Capital Improvement Program to Call for a Public Hearing.
Mayor.
Councilmember Squires.
I move to publish a summary of the proposed capital improvement program, CIP, as presented, and to call for a public hearing on Monday, May 2nd, 2016, at 7:00 PM.
Support.
Support from Councilmember King. Discussion from the table? From the general public?
Whose idea was that? Whose idea was that?
It's required by the charter.
Idea for what?
It's required by the charter.
Five-year capital improvement. Anybody else? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Squires.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge.
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch.
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin.
Aye.
Mayor Walker.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Item C2.
Mayor.
Regarding the police vehicles?
Yeah, I think.
I made this, so I'll, if it's all right, I'll.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Okay. You amend the resolution 1602-034, authorizing the purchase of three police, three Ford Police Interceptor Utility Vehicles at the state amended bid price of $25,285 each, or $75,855 total, from Gornow Ford, and further authorize the city manager to execute any documents required to complete this transaction.
Support.
Who was that done?
Support.
Support from Councilmember King. Chief, I got the residents confused, because we did this at the last meeting, so do you want to explain why we're here again?
Your Honor, at the last meeting, I presented to council a certain type of vehicle that we intended on purchasing. It was a two-wheel-drive Ford Police Interceptor Utility Vehicle, at a specific price of 25, I'm sorry, $24,165. When we went to place the order the following day, we learned that, we and our salesmen learned, that Ford was no longer producing this vehicle. So our alternative is to go to the next step up, which is an additional $1,120. We felt it was best to bring this back before council, because we had discussed a particular model at a particular price, and that has changed slightly. What we're now looking at is the Ford Explorer all-wheel-drive vehicle.
So it went from two-wheel drive to all-wheel drive?
Correct.
Because the two-wheel drives don't generally sell for police vehicles. They usually want the four-wheel.
It appears not, we learned.
Yeah. So that's the reason for the slight increase going from two-wheel drive to four-wheel drive?
That's correct. This, this all-wheel-drive vehicle was already at a state bid price, so this is the state bid price. It's just different than the two-wheel drive that we originally intended on purchasing.
And we understand that there is enough money in your budget fund that allows this to happen.
That's correct.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Still have the money in the police budget to buy these vehicles.
Yes.
Again, I want to declare myself a Ford employee. You guys still want me to vote tonight? It's up to you.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion from the table? From the general public?
Who's paying for it? Who's paying for it?
Residents.
Residents.
Everybody, residents.
Spend our money back, huh?
You want police protection, don't you?
Yeah, that, that way. You got, you got police cars now. How many do you need?
We need new ones.
Wants that work.
Huh? Every year.
We need new ones. They run 24/7.
Yeah, I should pick the parking lot.
Okay, okay, Mr. Baco. Anybody else? Mr. Mulder.
I'd be one glad you got the all-wheel drive instead of the two-wheel drive, you know, because I think that'd be much more safer for the police than for us, too. And I don't think you understand they wear out fast.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Kerwin.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge.
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch.
Aye.
Councilmember Squires.
Aye.
Mayor Walker.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Item C3, supplemental. Councilmember Lynch.
I move to approve the following supplemental appropriation to reassign $15,800 from the DDA use-of-fund balance account to the DDA streetscape account.
Support.
Councilmember King. Any discussion? This is to take another DDA fund balance to fund the gateway LED light upgrade, and the funds are used to pay DTE for this. That's the purpose of this. From the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge.
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin.
Aye.
Councilmember Squires.
Aye.
Mayor Walker.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Item 3B, Library Grant for Primetime Family Reading Time.
Mayor.
Councilmember Lynch.
I move to approve the following supplemental appropriation, Recognizing Revenues for Primetime Family Reading Time Grant, Increasing the Revenues and Expenditures in the Amount of $6,582.10.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Squires. Discussion from the table? From the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch.
Aye.
Councilmember Squires.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin.
Aye.
Mayor Walker.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Item C4, Vacated Property Registration Ordinance.
Mayor.
Councilmember Squires.
I move to introduce an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Garden City by adding a new section which shall be designated as the Vacant Property Registration and Maintenance Ordinance, providing for the registration, maintenance, and monitoring of vacant properties within the city, and call for a public hearing on Monday, March 21st, 2016, at 7:00 PM.
Support.
Support from Councilmember King. Discussion from the table? From the general public?
Whose idea was that? Whose idea was that?
I think the city manager got the idea from a few other cities that were, were using this. This is where we're gonna have vacant properties register with the city, so when we have blight conditions, we'll be able to contact them and keep better tabs on vacant properties. Make our city look good. Keep it looking good. Thank you, Mr. Baco. Anybody else? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Squires.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmembers Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge.
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch.
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin.
Aye.
Mayor Walker.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. We will now move to Item 10, Public Comments, for items that were not on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium, state your name. Mr. Sheikow.
Good evening, counsel. My wife went to the courthouse today, and she got to hear the results from, my wife and a friend of hers, went to the courthouse and got the news that the Judge Hammer heard both sides, and basically, he ruled in favor of the city. His comments, I mean, quote, but pretty gogon close, was that the, the city council and the mayor did everything proper. He had no reason to, to, to keep the case in his court, and basically even said that he was the, the lawyer for the people that were in foreclosure, were in the wrong court. So with that said, the, there's 10 days for, for them to appeal, and I, you know, back to the same judge, which wouldn't make sense. So congratulations, counsel, on at least doing procedure properly, and reviewed by the judge, and he definitely favored, decided in your favor. I guess, you know, the tragedy here is that we have people that lost the house, you know? There's no reason to stand up and scream and throw balloons in the air that, you know, hooray, you know? But we're not getting sued as a city, where I've, I've heard repeatedly, well, at this level, we're not getting sued as a city, that the fear-mongering that was thrown up here for months on end, please stay home. If you, now that, if, if you're one of those people that want to come up here and do some more fear-mongering, please go follow the court cases in the courts, and then come back here and report. Don't stand up here and tell us, "We're getting sued, we're getting sued," you know, the sky's falling kind of stuff, you know? It's kind of getting old. So having said that, keep up the good work, and have a nice night.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Mr. Weisack.
At the last meeting, in an effort to support the tax-breaking raises, given the police the phrase 000123 was cited. That covered a six-year period with raises in the last three years. Well, please listen to this. It hasn't been that long ago that I read off a raise being given the Macomb County Sheriff. It covered 00000011 year a raise, and I recall it was not a significant raise. Let's make some other comparisons. Here's some salaries. Mr. Murray, approximately 125 to 150 employees, I think I'm in the ballpark there, $138,000. Mr. Hackel, who's the Macomb County Executive, with 2,600 employees, $140,000. Mr. Evans, the Wayne County Executive, 3,650 employees, $154,000. Mike Duggan, the mayor of Detroit, with 8,700 employees, $166,000. And Mr. Patterson, from the very affluent county of Oakland, 4,900 employees, makes If you take into consideration the factors of number of employees, the population of the community, and the ability to pay, there are ratios, ratios of 20 to 50, and so forth. It is obvious, Mr. Murray, is vastly overpaid. You are vastly overpaid, Mr. Murray, and I'm not going to any of the other employees, but especially when you're talking about the ability for our people to pay. Now, time and time again, I've heard people at the table say, "We must take good care of employees. We must take good care of our employees." Well, have you ever, ever heard this council, this table, say, "We must take good care of our tax burden residents"? Anytime you ever said that? Tax residents burden, and losing homes. Well, tonight, as a proud parent, I'm departing from the norm. Winnie and I are proud to invite you to see a 13-minute program of our son Ray testifying before the United States Housing Ways Committee on Taxes. Just go to jonesday.com. Ray Weisack testifies. See video. You'll catch Ray on it. The primary discussion centers on tax matters. Ray has been before the House and the Senate on other occasions, appeared before the United States Supreme Court, and has spoken at the Great Hall, Department of Justice. States Supreme Court, and has spoken at the Great Hall, Department of Justice. He's written articles for numerous magazines, including forums, Nation and World International Tax Review. Ray was a Rhodes Scholar finalist, and he graduated from Yale undergrad at Harvard Law School. In ranking, he has been considered one of the international, top international tax lawyers in the world, and in the United States among the top five. Two of his children, two of their children, Nancy's wife and him, went to Yale, another Notre Dame. Time does not allow going into their outstanding achievements.
Fifteen seconds.
But they have done some marvelous things. Last Christmas, Ray's daughter was at the White House at a Christmas party. On another occasion a year ago, she was invited to a bowling party. They are just great kids. Among the other children and grandchildren, we have had the following grads: Michigan State II, Central Michigan I, Western Michigan I, Eastern Michigan II, U of M IV.
Your time's up, Mr. Weisack.
I never got a warning.
Yeah.
Yes, I didn't hear it.
Our youngest granddaughter is at U of M, a freshman out of Sacre Tille. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hunt?
Okay, sorry about that.
Mayor and council, just wanted to come up here to inform the citizens of Garden City once again about some of the truth. Not only at this podium, but splashed out there on the internet as usual, Mr. Buckner thought it was very interesting that Mr. Murray did not cherry pick a home located 29049 Beechwood, right behind City Hall. Here's the very interesting part: property that they're talking about was involved in a total loss fire. I looked it up real quickly, took about two minutes. Property taxes were paid on it as of December 16, 2015. Everything's current. Man may very well have an insurance claim on it, may be taking a while to straighten out, I really don't know, but that wasn't a tax foreclosure. Don't know how he could have cherry picked that. Getting real sick of that statement out there. If there is an insurance company involved, I've seen stuff go for a year before anything's ever decided or been done about it. Back in the February 8th meeting, Buckner wanted me to pay attention to his numbers, so I did. He stated there was 52 empty buildings along Ford Road between Inkster and Vinoy, 2.7 miles. There's his numbers. No, no, no. I drove up and down that road. I came up with 33. We do have some vacant places that need to be rented out, small little properties that you got to find the right person for. Last week, I drove out through Fermont Hills, West Bloomfield, a two-mile section out Orchard Lake Road. I don't think there was a single building that didn't have a "for" lease sign in front of it. Every single community out there is going to have some vacant buildings that need to be rented out. I think we're doing pretty good. City's in good shape. Mr. Buckner also jumped right to a decision about the promotion of Mr. De Michaels. Just wanted to bring this one up for him for a little bit of an education that he needs. To hold a position like that, you actually have to pass a test with the state of Michigan, not just take it, you got to pass that to become a building official. And he doesn't think he has any credentials as far as mechanical, plumbing, electrical. He doesn't have to have. Those are all specialty trades. Every single one of those trades out there, or sections out there, are done by a journeyman. Those people have to spend a lot of time in the field, in that business, and the city hires a plumbing inspector, a mechanical inspector. Heating and cooling, electrical, they come in part-time and they take care of that. Anytime I call for one of those inspections, they're going to tell you, "We only have that inspector available on Tuesday and Thursday, or on Monday and Wednesday from these two times." So, there's a little education for Mr. Buckner and anybody else out there. It's always the city's doing everything wrong. There's not one single thing wrong with what they did. That man went and passed the test, he has that license as a building official, congratulations. Then one last thing. Now, you know what, I'm going to leave that one for later on. I really want to thank Mr. Chico on what he came up here with, the good news he did. Congratulations. Thank you for the job you're all doing. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay. Mr. Baco.
One in Harrison, oh, fruit market, we should be there. The developer, guys, the builder, he's tearing all buildings down for the, those type of stuff.
Yeah, fruit market, that building's going to be coming down pretty soon.
That guy, he had it, money in the bank, he's rich now, as a developer. As a developer.
Okay, thank you.
How hit it. Why not?
What the hell?
Take a ride. Go in, give it, go in.
Stop, Michael.
Sit down. Sit down, Mr. Baco. City manager's report?
Thank you, your honor. I know council's aware of this, but for the benefit of anybody in the general public, I don't make $138,000 a year.
You make 140. Just saying.
I, I am paid a, a very good salary for being the chief of police, and, but it's under $100,000. And as we all know, I make $35,000 for this job, as city manager. And that $35,000 does not count toward my retirement. That was established by council clearly.
Mr. Murray, if you don't mind, if I could cut you just a little short.
You don't have to explain that to anybody. I think everybody here understands completely. If we didn't want you here, you wouldn't be here.
Thank you.
And you know what, I thank you for what you do do.
Thank you. When Mr. Weisack's doing math... When Mr. Weisack's doing math, I wish he'd figure out an hourly rate, because I actually did once upon a time, and it was pretty depressing.
Yeah.
Don't let me bring my wife in here.
Sounds like me.
Couple of council members have inquired about the McDonald's. We have finally communicated with, actually, the owner of the Garden City McDonald's, Mr. John Campbell. The project is not dead. There were some barriers that they perceived after our last meeting. One of the barriers has to do with the cost of the project. As the mutual vision, when it came together, caused the, the expense to go up, and it was more than Mr. Campbell could afford at the time. But talks are still open, conversations are still going on. They're now waiting for a couple of things from us that they will get, so this project is still moving. I'll keep you posted on that. Just briefly, I want to mention, because I noticed it was a pretty big article in the Westland Observer, our Garden City Fire Department is also working on a safer grant. I really admire what the Chief Harmon and her staff are doing, because they're looking forward. The police department and the fire department both are going to have a tremendous talent drain come at a certain period of time coming up in the next two to three years. Both departments are going to lose a lot of experienced people. The fire department's working on a safer grant so that they can perhaps get some people in, get them some experience, get them trained before these departures all occur, and then be able to fill the position so that we will maintain a fully-staffed fire department. I think that's really some good forward thinking. Unfortunately, there's not a grant for this for the police department, because our crime levels are not high enough. That's all I have tonight, your honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarge?
Since you started out with Mr. Weisack's comment, I'm going to follow up. I just want you to, I mean, I, I know Mr. Weisack's left, but I can remember when Mr. Weisack fought for the raises and fought for his benefits when he was a city employee. So, you know, I, I, it just makes me, I, I don't quite understand where he is coming from, because when he was in the position, he was there fighting, and he should be. He, he was doing what he should be doing at that time. The only other thing tonight is, I just want to mention that my heart goes out for the family of Linda Bonnivitz. Linda was a neighbor of mine, but I first met her, knew of her because of her overwhelming, wonderful work that she did for many, many years with the Garden City PTA. And she was also a secretary at Garden City High School. And she had just, was, just did so much for this community as far as education, and she's supported education for these kids so, so thoroughly. The family memorials, they're asking that any memorial goes to a fund for a scholarship in Linda's name. I, I don't have the particulars as far as if you want to, to send a memorial, but I'm sure Garden City High School would make, you know, would get that to the proper location. I do, on a personal nature, though, the one thing I will remember about Linda the most is looking out my front window and watching her play with her grandkids, and the giggling and the fun, and she was just a wonderful, wonderful grandma, too. So, again, my heart goes out to them. That's all tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember King?
No, nothing to tell you today.
Okay. Councilmember Kerwin?
I'd also like to wish condolences to the family of Linda Bonnivitz. She was a hard-working lady. And other than that, don't forget the St. Thomas Fish Fry on Fridays. Better be there early, really good.
Good fish.
It's all happening there.
Okay. Councilmember Squires?
I really don't have anything, but I will be at St. Thomas to take your money, if you come to the fish fry, so please come out, it's really good. Thank you.
Councilmember Lynch?
And I'll be there to spend my money on good fish, and also my condolences to the Bonnivitz family.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Just one thing I saw, I know our simple recycling started, I think, this week, and I saw some people with the green bags out by their curb. That's to be on, on your regular garbage day, and then they'll come pick it up. Otherwise, it's going to sit there until your garbage day. So, I know the couple of houses I seen, they, they're not going to get picked up for a few days now, so that's it.
Okay. Ms. Bettis?
First, I just wanted to ask the chief, how many hours did you work this week?
This week so far?
Oh, no, sorry, last week.
Only 12 so far.
How about last week, 80, 60?
Somewhere around there.
Okay. I'm just wondering how that breaks down in terms of hourly rate. Oh, you said it was terrible. All right, oh, that's right, okay. I'm sorry. I would like to, one, announce the kickoff for the Americans Cancer Society Relay for Life for Garden City. And joining us this year, Dearborn Heights. And the kickoff is going to be at the Garden City VFW post over on Ford Road, and it's going to be on the 16th at 6:30. And registration is at 6:30, and the program starts at 7:00. And so, for those of you who are interested in Relay for Life, please join us there for the kickoff. We have gotten a lot of calls about when we're going to have the next shred day, and we are going to have it in April, April 30th to be exact, and I know this is a little advanced, but just wanted to give you a heads up. And we have, try to have them twice a year, so the spring community shred day will be Saturday, April 30th, starts at 10:00 AM in the City Hall parking lot. And also, at that same time, you can drop off your food donations to our home pantry, as you have for the last few events, and our people who are in need of food and sustenance for their family will certainly appreciate it. You can call and get details, or find details on the internet at our website, or call our office. Also, in addition to shred day, the county, Wayne County, has four events for hazardous household waste. And that is going to be at different locations throughout the year, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM on all Saturdays. The first one is April 23rd at the Huron High School parking lot at Merriman and Van Born. And so, if you've got, been collecting old paint cans and oil and things like that, that you need to get rid of responsibly, then that's going to be the first one. There's also going to be one in Dearborn in June, there's going to be one at the Westland Shopping Center in August, and there's going to be one at the Wayne County Community College Down River Campus in Taylor in October. And lastly, I just wanted to send my condolences to the Naraka family. Geraldine Naraka worked as an election inspector for I don't know how many years. She was usually at Memorial School, and she was just a very fine lady, and we are going to miss her, so. She always had a smile, she always was ready to work, she loved working the elections, and she did a fine job helping us keep those elections safe, fair, and run smoothly. And as, as it would have it, her funeral is tomorrow on Election Day, and I know she'll be smiling down at us and, and wishing us well. And so, we are looking forward. She was a stalwart member of our election team, and we're going to miss her. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And city manager wants to say something else?
Your honor, I just wanted to mention, I just learned this after the meeting had started, that the memorial service for Linda is going to be on April 2nd at 11:00 AM, that's a Saturday, at the First United Methodist Church at 6440 Merriman, I'm sorry, 6443 Merriman. So, it's April 2nd at 11:00 AM for Linda. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Linda Bonnivitz was a classmate of mine. We both graduated from Garden City West the same year. Wonderful lady, very active in the PTA, and employee at the high school for several years, and she will definitely be missed, and our prayers go out to her family. Mr. Weisack, you left again, but I'm sure you'll watch this on TV. Yes, we do try to take care of our employees. You yourself are a Garden City retiree. You live in a nice house in Garden City, so you got a roof over your head, food on your table. I would say Garden City has taken well care of you over your many years that you've been retired. So, we take, we definitely like to take care of our employees, and there's nothing wrong with that. So, just like we have you, Mr. Weisack. At this time, a motion is in order to go into closed session for TPOAM negotiations and an attorney opinion.
So, move.
Move, like. Mr. Kerwin, and supported by Councilmember Lynch. Ms. Bettis?
Sorry.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. At this time, we're going to recess to go into closed session. Thank you.
And Mayor, you did say for TPOAM.
Yes.